I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Thursday morning, August 29th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolf. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
And to Tom's left, Brandy Spangler, who'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Brandy. Greg McNally, Director of Planning and Community Development. And to my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, and I just wanted to direct the, uh, everybody's attention over to the other side. You guys can thank me later. This is so that they can sneak in. Uh, good morning.
The stall tactic. Yeah. Good morning, gentlemen. Our Deputy County Attorneys Keegan Shea and Nico Hash. And Frank Cornwell is our Chief Financial Officer, sitting in for Mr. Walts today. Good morning, sir. We have a sign-in sheet as well as agendas in the front. Please sign in prior to leaving today so we have a good record of who's attended our meeting. And we will start with our consent action items. Mr. Cornwell, turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. We have two consent action items today. Item A for vendor claims report week ending August 30th, 2024. And item B, public meeting minutes for May 14th, August 13th, 15th, 2024.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners, about the consent action items?
No.
How about public comment on the consent action items? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent action items 2A and 2B as presented by Mr. Cornwell.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Movement second to approve consent as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Capital City Seal Coating. Good morning, Captain.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am Captain Kevin Wright with the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. First name is Kevin, K-E-V-I-N, last W-R-I-G-H-T. Before you, the Commissioners will consider a contract with Capital City Seal Coating in the amount of $9,012.64 for seal coating, hot rubber crack sealing, line striping, and ADA hashing services at the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Building, which is a county building and county property. The contract begins upon approval by both parties with work to be completed by September 30th, 2024. This is regularly scheduled maintenance on that parking lot there. It, I don't know in my notes, I apologize, I do not have the last time it was done, but this is normal maintenance on asphalt and it's time to have that done. So maintaining that asphalt so we don't have to totally redo it.
Yeah, thank, thank you. It might even be the first time. Uh, it's, it's relatively new. It's only, how old's the, how old's the building? 10, 12 years?
We were just talking about that and I believe 2014
Yeah.
is when the building was built and I still refer to that building as the new
Yeah.
Search and Rescue Building, but it's actually a decade old.
Yeah. So this could be the first parking lot maintenance project. Who knows?
I believe it could be.
Yeah. Great. Commissioners, any questions for Captain Wright?
Just a, um, where's the location of Search and Rescue Building? Is this one down on the fairgrounds?
Uh, no, that would be the old Search and Rescue Building. This is the new Search and Rescue Building, located off of Valley Drive in East Helena, in the East Helena Valley area, just south of East Helena High School.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner, just along those lines, it'd be a, uh, be a great, uh, building and property to tour sometime. So get together with Captain Wright, you'd, uh, you did a really good job and it's, uh, it houses a lot of that special equipment as well. There's large.
Actually, I believe I've been out there, but yesterday I was at a fair board meeting and I drove by the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff Rescue, uh, and there was a, a pickup truck parked out in front of it. I thought, oh, I didn't realize Search and Rescue was still here. So that's why I was curious.
Okay.
What do you keep in that building?
That is actually used as the Sheriff's Office Reserve Building and they maintain all the reserve vehicles and a lot of reserve operations and meetings are at the old Search and Rescue Building there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good, good question. Any other questions? Then, all right. Thank you. Glad we're doing some maintenance on that, uh, parking lot. We need to keep up our, our assets that we have. So absolutely. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Capital City Black Seal Coating as explained by Captain Wright.
Second.
Movement second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-96, levying an assessment upon customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Management District owing real property, owning real property in the district and owing a pay-as-you-throw program charge on August 15th, 2024. That is a long title, but thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hunt-Housen, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. And as you may remember, I come once a year with these, uh, following two resolutions related to the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District. The residents, uh, in the district are allowed 3,000 pounds, uh, of tonnage, uh, municipal solid waste tonnage. And if they exceed that amount, then they are charged a pay-as-you-throw dollar amount that they are invoiced regularly. But payment is not required until the end of July. And so the following two resolutions are the list of real property owners and then following that will be the, um, mobile home property owners that did not pay the amount due by the end of July. So before you first, uh, is a resolution to levy and assess customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District that own the real property and that owe pay-as-you-throw charges after August 15th, 2024. In accordance with the policy, policy set for the pay-as-you-throw program, statements were mailed to permit holders who had exceeded their 3,000 pound limit for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2024. Only those accounts owing $6 or more were, excuse me, mailed these statements and these charges were due and payable by August 15th. Submitted with the resolution is Exhibit A, the list of accounts with outstanding charges as of September 16th. Once the resolution is approved, these charges will be placed on the property owner's tax bill. And I'd like to go back because it's the charges as of August 16th, not September 16th. Sorry about that. Once the resolution is approved, these charges will be placed on the property owner's tax bill. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2024-96 to levy an assessment upon customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District owning real property and authorize the chair to sign. Are there any questions concerning this resolution?
Thank you. Just, uh, something that I'll lead with and then pass on to these folks if they have anything. Uh, this is relatively normal. As you said, this happens. Um, so if people that don't pay, some of them, it's intentional. They just say, I'm just gonna let it roll over and show up on my property tax bill and that's when I'll pay it. I just speak to that a little bit. It's not like we're going out after these folks. Some of them, this is, uh, kind of the way they do it. So if they don't pay by the 15th of August, then it goes onto their tax bill and some of them are intentional that way.
Correct. Uh, Chairman, Commissioners, that is correct. They're allowed to put, we don't assess, uh, interest. It's just the amount that's remaining after the end of the fiscal year. Um, a lot of people realize if that's the case, they can just put it on their property tax statement and allow their, um, the payment to be made with their property taxes rather than sending a, a check on a monthly basis.
Right. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
Uh, if I might, Commissioner. What, remind me again what the per ton rate is for, uh, the pay-as-you-throw when you go over the top, your, your limit?
At the transfer station, I want to say it's $54.75 if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Per ton?
Per ton. Mm-hmm. And if I might, I have some statistics for you, Chairman, if
Great.
Um, thank you. Um, so on average, about, um, 165 taxpayers per year will have um, a pay-as-you-throw assessment put on their property taxes. And this year it was approximately 169 taxpayers, so a little, a little less, um, or right in about average. And then, um, on average for, um, real property, it's about, uh, $3,092 in total. And this year it was $3,181 in total. For personal property, it runs about $750 total. And, uh, that, the amount this year was $769 in total. So we're kind of right in with where we've been the last five years. It's not a lot of money. The city's doing a good job collecting our, our pay-as-you-throw money on a monthly basis, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other question? Okay. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on Resolution 2024-96? Seeing no public comment. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-96?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-96, levying an assessment upon customers of Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Management District owning real property in the district and owing a pay-as-you-throw program charge on August 15th, 2024, as presented by Ms. Zachral.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Movement second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Move on to the next one, which is Resolution 2024-97, levying an assessment upon customers in the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Management District owning mobile homes as personal property in the district and owing a pay-as-you-throw program charge after August 15th, 2024.
Thank you, Chairman Hunt-Housen, Commissioners. Again, Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. This resolution is very similar to the last one, except it's for property owners that owe pay-as-you-throw, um, on their mobile home as personal property. So this resolution is to levy and assess customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District that own mobile homes and that owe pay-as-you-throw charges after August 15th of 2024. In accordance with the policy set for the pay-as-you-throw program, statements were mailed to permit holders who had exceeded the 3,000 pound limit for the period July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2024. Only those accounts owing $6 or more were mailed and these charges were due and payable by August 15th, 2024. Submitted with the resolution is Exhibit A, the list of accounts with outstanding charges. Once the resolution is approved, these charges will be placed on the mobile homeowner's tax bills. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2024-97 to levy an assessment upon customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District owning mobile homes as personal property and authorize the chair to sign. Are there any questions on this resolution?
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Okay, looks like no questions. Public comment on this item? Any public comment? Public comment. Seeing no public comment. Commissioners, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move, uh, to approve Resolution 2024-97, levying an assessment upon customers of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Management District owing mobile, owning mobile homes as personal property in the district and owing a pay-as-you-throw program charge after August 15th of 24, as explained by Ms. Zachral.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Audra, thank you for your help there. On to the next thing, which is a grant application to, to the Prevent Cancer Foundation. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Neiman. I am the Health Officer, Department Director for Lewis and Clark Public Health. This morning I have before you a grant application to Prevent Cancer Foundation. This is a two-year grant with a total of $100,000, which equals $50,000 per year. The term of the grant is January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026. This funding will provide resources to expand our cancer prevention and early detection program with a focus on patient navigation. We have had a cancer prevention program for many years that serves, um, a, a four-county region. So Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, Jefferson, and Mar counties. We typically receive funds from the Department of Public Health and Human Services and have for many years to do this work. And the amount that we have received from the state of Montana for this work has been cut in half over the last couple of years. So we are seeking funds to make our program whole again. These funds will allow us the necessary resources to outreach and serve communities that are underserved and disproportionately impacted, which include residents living in rural areas of our county like Lincoln and Augusta. So female breast cancer is the leading cancer in Lewis and Clark County. And, um, what we know is there's only 28% of residents served in this county that seek preventative screening like mammography. So what, what we know is that early detection and early identification and early treatment saves lives and we have good treatment available. And so the, the goal is to, um, help women access the necessary early detection like mammography as quickly and, and as possible on the recommended, um, schedule. So that is the application that you have before you. The deadline for applying for this, um, for this grant is at the beginning of September. And so we ask that you please approve our application to the Cancer Prevention Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Please.
Drenda, you mentioned that your funding for this important program has been cut in half. Is that from the legislature?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, uh, the, the original funding comes from, down from the CDC, the Centers for, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. So it's federal funds
Federal fund, okay.
that come to the state and then the state distributes to the local jurisdictions to do the work. And so it was cut at the federal level and then had to be cut at the state level as well. And it, the cut has happened, um, not drastically, it's happened gradually over about a two or three-year period to get to the point where we are now, which is a half-time staff person doing this work. So this is our effort to bolster that work back up again.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment on this grant application? Hearing none. Commissioners, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the grant application to Prevent Cancer Foundation as presented by Ms. Neiman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All the best. Hope we are successful. Okay. All in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is Grant Contract PHH24-0508KH-F between Lewis and Clark County, or Lewis and Clark Public Health and, uh, Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Again, Drenda Neiman, Director and Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. This morning we have a grant award or grant contract before you for approval. Uh, this is for a universal home visiting program. Um, it's an 18-month grant beginning July 1st, 2024, expiring December 30th, 2025. The total grant amount is $247,268.69. This is a pilot project to offer home visiting services to every family during pregnancy and postpartum. We currently have a couple of evidence-based home visiting services that we've had for many years. Um, these services are typically offered to a high-risk population. We have small caseloads. Um, and they are long-term home visiting services. And so this will, this allows us to expand our home visiting services to every family, um, pregnant and, um, leaving the hospital with a new baby, um, interested in home visiting services in the tri-county area. So Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, and Jefferson counties. There are about 700, on average, babies born, um, eight, per year at St. Peter's Hospital. And so that's where, um, St. Peter's serves a broader district than just Lewis and Clark. So we're considering, um, services that would essentially, those that are served by the St. Peter's, um, uh, the birthing center at St. Peter's Hospital. Um, the universally offered home visiting will consist of four home visits. So this is a short-term, more of a short-term approach to home visiting as opposed to our longer-term home visiting services that we have intact right now. So the, um, ideally, we will, we will be able to do one home visit at, um, prenatally, so before that baby is born, and then three after the baby is born. The home visits will focus on breastfeeding support, safe sleep, um, car seat installation, and home safety. Home visitors will also assess for other needs that the families may have and make referrals to community services as well as make referrals into our more long-term home visiting services if the family so chooses. So these are the services that will be provided in this community with this grant, um, with this grant that's been awarded to Lewis and Clark Public Health and we recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, I, I believe we partner with several of the nonprofits in, in doing some of the home visiting work. Does this apply to some of this money as well?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolf, that is true. We, um, there are multiple agencies in the community that provide home visiting services. Lawrence Crittenon, we partner with them to provide, um, parents' teachers' home visiting services, which is excellent because that means we can serve more families. Um, we only have a half-time home visiting, um, home visitor at Lewis and Clark Public Health. So , um, partnering is really important and we, we do that often in the work. Um, there was another agency that was, uh, funded with these funds. So there will be opportunity then again to collaborate so that we're not duplicating services, but, um, essentially serving more. So we have the ability to, um, get up into the rural areas of our county and of course, making sure that we, um, provide those services in our neighboring jurisdictions as well. So.
Just seems like, if I might follow up, Mr. Chairman, I, it just seems like a, a great way to spread our effectiveness uh, and without having to have more staff to do it, working with some of the nonprofits. And I think it's a very positive thing.
Thank you. We have had great success in partnering with the nonprofits around home visiting. There's a task force that comes together to ensure that we are, um, we are providing, um, home visiting to fidelity for the programs that are evidence-based. And also we do a really good job of making sure that we're not duplicating services and that we are serving as many families as we can. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve this grant contract?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant contract PHH24-0508KH-F between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as explained by Ms. Neiman.
Second.
Movement second to approve the grant contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a contract renewal between Lewis and Clark County and Environmental Systems Research Institute. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is James Thomas. I am the City and County IT Director. Uh, before you this morning is a proposal to renew the Environmental Systems Research Institute, ESRI. I'll apologize for the alphabet soup of terms coming at you. Uh, this is to renew a small government enterprise agreement, also known as an SGEA or even just an EA, uh, between Lewis and Clark County and ESRI. The enterprise agreement provides the most, the easiest and most cost-effective means of providing the entire organization with access to the geographic information system, also known as GIS. The EA will provide uncapped access to the professional desktop software suite and online mapping tools, resulting in improved efficiencies and better workflow, all while centralizing GIS license management under a fixed year, fixed three-year contract. This, excuse me, this renewal has been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office and the county procurement, where it was determined this renewal is classified as proprietary maintenance agreement for software and systems controls, which is exempt from county procurement, Policy 1.16. Staff recommends approval of the contract to renew the ESRI enterprise agreement at an annual cost $58,500 and authorize the chair to sign.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
If I'm, if I might, I, I just have had great experience with the GIS department and trying to find things when I'm looking for a piece of property that somebody had makes reference to and I, I just, I think you, the, the, the G I S department has been a real benefit and I, I just, if you might explain a little bit about what's available and what's, what might be available to the general public if they have questions about things, mapping in our county.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Rolf, I would like to invite my GIS expert, uh, GIS Assistant Manager Eric Spangenberg up to answer that question.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Eric Spangenberg. Uh, I am the GIS Coordinator, uh, underneath the IT Enterprise. Uh, we support both city government and county government. And to your question, Commissioner Rolf, uh, the public, all the data, uh, I would say 99%, pretty much all the data that we manage and maintain within our GIS, uh, is publicly available. Uh, we have a number of open data applications that are web-accessible, uh, online, serving the public. Uh, a lot of people are familiar with the State of Montana's Cadastral Service, which is their parcel service. Uh, we actually build upon the data they serve and we put a local government value-added benefit to it where we, uh, overlay it with our roads, our addressing, our city zoning, county zoning, the RID, so those rural improvement districts are overlaid with that. The ability to make a quick selection for the, the, um, Scratch Gravel Hills types of things is all benefited through the, the use of a GIS. And, uh, uh, like I said, everything that we manage is publicly available. Uh, city utilities, uh, county RID, well, I've mentioned the RIDs already, uh, but all the county zoning is accessible and, uh, that supports our planning department. Uh, we support the city planning department, uh, county public work, city public work. So you, you name a department, county attorney's office, uh, we're doing trial exhibits to support their, their, their side of things as well. So there's not a department that we're not supporting in one form or flavor with this, uh, uh, agreement. Allows us to have, like I said, uncapped access. So we can have as many users. Public Health has really adopted it. Uh, what COVID, COVID learned, what we learned from that is that we can use these tools to serve up these dashboards that support, what's going on in the health world, uh, but also going on in terms of, uh, capital improvement plans, anything along those lines. And so the tools have, have just become ubiquitous with anything in local government. So. But yeah, I agree. Commissioner Rolf, it's, uh, I use it all the time. Someone says, hey, can you come out to our place? I'm pulling up our map going, where are they? How do I get there? So.
And these things are, are available to our public and, and I, I know there's a small fee for, for some things. Uh, Kenny, maybe you could, uh,
Yeah.
talk a little bit about that.
Pretty much the only thing that we charge for in our office is a hard copy map. So I, I can't think of anything where we're charging for data. Uh, we, you know, someone wants I can't think of anything where we're charging for data. We, you know, if someone wants a large map, say a wall-size map, it's a nominal fee. Our rates haven't changed since 2005, believe it or not. So, so, but that's about the only thing that I can think of that we even remotely think of charging a fee for. So.
And then one more follow-up. So for things on election-related, like precincts or legislative districts, that's there. And then if you're interested in, in what's going on in subdivisions, you know, maybe the breakout between federal and state lands and, and in an area, and what's, what's private lands, those are, those are all available within the county.
Yep. All available through our online applications.
And, and, and if I understand you're right, many things you could, you, you could download it, you could send an email that has it, so there wouldn't be a cost to the public that.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Yep. And we encourage a lot of them. We, we do create PDF maps, so the Adobe version format of those, and people, we can email those, people can have those and open them in their phone, have those available, you know, if they're, you know, to the side of the election side of things. So if I'm a candidate and I want to know a specific neighborhood that I want to canvas, I can have that either online on my, on my tablet and phone, or I can get a PDF and be able to see where I'm going to go knock on doors, or whatever candidate might be wanting to do. So.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I need a tutorial on, I mean, some of the stuff I can find, but some of it is just, I'm just not there yet. So at some point.
Yep.
I'd, I'd sure like to have somebody sit down and, and work with me so I can get so it's more functional for me.
You, you give me a time and I, I will be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So along those lines, great discussion and questions. If I am Joe or Jane Public out there right now and I want to access some of these things, like I just want to look at my own property and see the, see the layers that are offered through our GIS programming, how do, how do I find it? How do I get there? What, what's my basic?
Quickest, quickest way is through either of the, either through the City of Helena's website or Lewis and Clark County's website. I believe we have quick links on either one of those pages going to maps. If not, you just do a search for GIS on either one, and that'll get you to the GIS page. And from there, we provide the links to get to the various online applications.
Great. And if somebody had specific questions, again, Ubar and your phone number or emails.
My phone number? My name is Eric Spangenberg, 406-447-8389. That's my office number. Just my first initial last name, @LCCountyMT.gov. Happy to assist anyone with any of their data, data-finding needs.
Great. Thank you. And you are very good at answering questions because
Thank you.
I've had many over the years. You're always very helpful. So thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. And again, we're talking about a contract renewal here, and we'll throw it out there for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none? Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the contract renewal?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract renewal between Lewis and Clark County and Environmental Systems Research Institute, as presented by James Thomas and Mr. Spangenberg.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved in second to approve the contract renewal as presented. Further discussion? Thank you both. Appreciate it. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. On we go. Next item. It's preliminary plat application for amended parcels P1 and P2, amending lot P2K of Hontrack subdivision. And we heard this week ago, approximately? I think it was a week ago. Phil will fill us in. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Bill Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. As you mentioned, I am back presenting the amended parcels P1 and P2, amending lot P2K of the Hontrack subdivision. It is a subsequent minor subdivision application. That application number is 2024-7. The applicant is Lawrence and Alexis Lasoski. So a recap, here's the vicinity map of the proposed project. That hatched mark is the existing lot in that subdivision. That lot is referenced as P2K, is addressed as 845 Cheryl. It's a one-acre lot containing one single-family residence. That lot is a part of the 20-lot major subdivision referred to as the amended parcels P1 and P2 of Hontrack. As mentioned last week, that subdivision received final plat approval in 2006 by this Board of County Commissioners, and those lots have been mostly developed with predominantly single-family uses. This summer, June 25th of, of this year, the applicant submitted their subsequent, subsequent minor application to decrease the length, maybe no access restriction along their lot, the western portion of Lot P2K. In the application materials, the applicant states they wish to reduce that, no access restriction from 148 feet to 98 feet, a 50-foot reduction, giving them app, access to Michelle Drive in addition to Cheryl Road. So from the overview aerial image here, you can see the highlighted image where on the plat, that no access restriction exists along that western portion. Another aerial image with a little more detail shows the removal of that 50-foot, a decrease of the 50-foot no access there, maintaining the no access on the northern portion along their property. Again, Chairman, Commissioners, here's the proposed preliminary plat the applicant has submitted for this amended application. As you can see, again, Lot P2K, 50-foot portion, it will be abandoned slash eliminated along the property. As we discussed last week, staff has completed the analysis and review of the proposed amended subdivision. I'll just briefly go over a few items, but the property is located with the urban residential mixed-use district, the R1 subdivision, does not violate any zoning regulations, is not creating any lots or proposing, proposing any new uses for that zoning area. And staff has found it to be in compliance with the 2016 Helena growth policy and existing subdivision regulations. As again, we was discussed last week, staff has not found a single origin for the no access restriction, and therefore, moving forward with the application, I believe it will be compliant with all existing regulations. Again, the application was submitted on the 25th, deemed sufficient July 14th, which began the 35 workday review period as laid out in state statute, which is scheduled to end September 3rd of next month. As part of the review period, agency comments were sent out and received, and all that is compiled within the staff report. Additionally, the application was publicly noticed as required in state statutes. And as of this morning, no additional public comment was received. Again, staff is recommending approval of the amended plat application, subject to the conditions of approval based on the recommended findings of fact found in the staff report. Additionally, staff has provided the suggested motions on a couple of slides here to aid in the approval process. This approval process is broken down into five steps, starting with the consideration of the subdivision application, findings of fact, potential for adverse impacts, mitigation of those impacts, and the resulting conditions of approval. And in conclusion would be the final, our complete action on the subdivision application. So with that, I am available for any questions you may have, and the applicant and property owner here is here as well to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. And so after questions and opportunity for the applicant, as well as any public comment, then we'll just go through this step by step. And one step at a time, we'll take it, make sure that we cover all our bases, and we'll, we'll guide this along together if you're okay with that. All right. How about questions, commissioners, right now about the proposed amendment? Any questions at this time?
If I might, if I might, it just, at the outset, this just seems like a lot to go through for some, something that seems so logical. Can I help me through the, think through this, why, why we have to go through this long process, do something that seems so logical?
Chairman, Commissioners, yes, it is a involved, lengthy process to do what would simply seem like a, a simple thing to remove or to decrease a no access restriction. The simple answer is that it is a, was placed on the plat for that subdivision, and in, that was completed in 2006. The only way to amend or remove that no access restriction is to go through an amended plat subdivision application. So following all state statutes that line up, you know, it's, if it was, it could be anything that, subsequent mine application that amends a plat could be much more significant, or it could be very minor. But to do anything on that, you have to go through that, that process that's laid out in state statute in regards to subdivision. So that's where we find ourselves today, is to, you know, to, to, to remove that and to give, you know, equal opportunity to the public to comment, allow public and county agencies to comment in the result of any potential impacts of that removal. So it is, you know, it definitely seems like a process, and, and some applications can be simpler than others, but that's where we find ourselves today.
If I might follow up, do you have in the past records, anything that shows whether this was something that was requested by the original developer or landowner, or was it something that was insisted on by, by some of our staff?
Chairman, Commissioners, staff did a investigative, exhaustive investigation into the original application for subdivision that was submitted in 2004. We went through all the meeting notes from the planning board and the commissioned, an attempt to locate where that no access restriction came from, or the origin of it. We were not able to determine where that came from. It was on some of the application materials, and it continued throughout the process and eventually ended up on the plat and on the covenants for that subdivision. It was laid out there. So unfortunately, no, we don't have the, the reasoning or the, you know, the idea where that came from or why it was placed there. And that's why we go through the, you know, part of that amending application is to go through that process to ensure that, you know, that there wasn't a legitimate or significant reason for that no access restriction being placed there. So we attempt to make sure that we cover all our bases.
And then just to follow up, but I think maybe it's something to think about in the future as we're doing things that, you know, something that we, if we had some understanding about why it is, if it doesn't, if, if it might create more problems that, or a big problem down the road, like this seems to have done, then maybe we should try not to put restrictions on that, that are unnecessary. Maybe they had all sorts of reasons, but it does seem to be a little complicated. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've just commented on that. I think last time we talked about this a little bit, and it was before my time as well. But if I remember, and Mr. McNally can chime in if he's, he's been around a while, but some of these no access restrictions have been, in this one, we couldn't find a reason, exact reason why, but some of them put, been put on in the past because typically you try to, especially lots that are, this isn't perfectly on a corner, but it has two, two, two streets that are fronted by two streets, typically one or the other. We usually have one access point per lot, and that, that has been a, kind of a typical thing where the other street would have a no access. So you don't have as, you don't have all these entrance points for people to come in and have potential for traffic or accidents, those kinds of things. But if, in this case, it's a, not a big deal, and, and the risk is low in terms of what we're assessing here and going through the process, then that's why we have the process to be able to, to look at that more closely. But Mr. McNally?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Certainly, as you indicated, that's, that's likely what was occurring here in this situation. We can't be for sure because we don't have something stated. To, to what Mr. Gonzalez indicated, we're going to, about ready to go through a decision process in which we amend this plat potentially with your decision. And in that process, and in our review, the way the situation is today is we're documenting the facts and the conditions and the regulations upon which we make decisions. So in the future, when we take on a subdivision application in full and total, we're creating a record. You are creating a record in your decision-making process for the regulations that we have and why they're being applied to a particular process, a particular project. So this process that you're about ready to go through in your decision-making is quite lengthy, and it's lengthy for that reason. It helps to create and establish that record so that in the future, your, the commissioner that's sitting in that chair, 20 years from now, when they look back to amend a plat, they can see the record upon which, and why that decision was made, and then they can choose to make a different decision based on that record and, and the record of that current moment.
Right. And I think that, if I might, I think that makes some good sense. You know, you, I continually get great comments from the public about how, how easy it is to get things done in, in the department, and it just seems like one that seems, seemed cumbersome for what we were trying to accomplish. I mean, we, I think it's just important to keep remembering that when folks come in, want to do things, we should, our attitude should be as it seems like it generally is. How do we get it done for them? And it just seems like this particular thing was kind of cumbersome to get them.
It does seem that way. I agree. However, you know, we, we don't know how a neighbor might feel about it, or we don't know about how traveling public might feel about changing this. Or in this case, it looks relatively simple, but what if it was a dangerous corner? Or, you know, there was some sort of thing there that caused, you know, this to be complicated from a, you know, safety standpoint or something like that. So we, going through the process seems cumbersome, and sometimes for a simple, what looks to be a simple thing like this, that is relatively, or could be not very, I'll say complicated and or, you know, problematic for those that are looking at it. We don't know that. So going through it lets us really understand that and build that record that shows that, yeah, this, this is or isn't a problem for the neighbors and/or for the traveling public. So it's, it's, it's cumbersome, but it's important, I think. Were you going to weigh in, Mr. Ash? Did I see you leaning forward, or, or was that just a way to rest your elbows? Please?
No, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, no, that was probably more of a lean-in rather than needing to comment on something. But since you've called, I'll just add as well, certainly not the, what's happening here with this application, but I can envision a situation where if you have a lot that's fronted by, you know, a public, a public road, and if you don't have a no access restriction, in theory, someone can punch in 17 access points on their road. And so, you know, Commissioner, to your point, yeah, that could create an issue for the traveling public. And so this is a situation where there's not that much of an impact, where there's, that's being proposed, and I think that, that shows out in the staff report. So this is actually a pretty quick process in terms of the subdivision and Plating Act. Every time you're going to amend a plat, you have to go back through those impacts. So again, not that this application is doing it, but certainly if someone were to have a similar law and say, well, I, I want to remove the no access, and then they put 16 access points on their road for various things, that would create an issue which is incumbent upon the county to review for those impacts. So.
Yeah. And to Commissioner Ralph's point, I think, and maybe Mr. McNally, you can speak to this, or Mr. Gonzalez, today, if a subdivision was proposed, a new subdivision, if this were a new subdivision being proposed, there, there is, there would be documented reasoning for no access stretches on roads or corners or whatever. We, we would have that more fully documented. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. We, in your decision-making process, that's, that's We, in your decision-making process, that's, that's your task is to then document why we're, we're, we're applying the regulations we're applying to a particular decision, a subdivision application.
Right, so we go through that. So, yeah, it was a good, a good point. It's like, why did they do this in the first place and they didn't, we don't know for sure. But today, we will make sure that people know why we're making these decisions. So that kind of plays to the reason we have to go through this as well. All right. Anyway. Please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and just one more thing. I know we've seen in the past too where applicants have designed either subdivision or included easements or including no restriction accesses kind of on their own initiative. And we see that in covenants as well, which is kind of outside of what the county might be reviewing historically at that time. So for example, someone could be trying to divi, or develop a subdivision and they do it in a way that the county may or not be addressing those impacts at that time. So it can explain why, oh, if you have a no access restriction, the county's looking at going, okay, we're only going to look at the impacts here and here. So at that time, it actually may have been a lot quicker then.
Sure.
You know, move forward to now, want to change that. It's like, okay, we're going to go back to then reviewing what that impact was almost at that time when that subdivision initially went through. So in this case, a pretty minor change, but we've seen situations where there are major changes proposed in amended.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anything else, Mr. Gonzalez?
Not this time.
Anything from the applicant? Like to share with us? Okay. How about public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, we begin our decision-making process and Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for putting that up. So the way like to do this is that we'd like to have a, a motion to, well, we can have any further discussion first if you like, but then a motion to kind of open the floor, which is a global motion to approve the sub, the amended subdivision application as presented by Mr. Gonzalez. He has a example motion on the, on the screen there, so we can do that. And then within that motion, then we would, we would take up the findings of fact, conclusions and then conditions of approval, and then come back to that motion and kind of close it around that. So that's, that's the plan. If you're okay with that. So how about a motion to? Or someone wants to make this motion, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the preliminary application for amended parcels P one and P two, amending lot P two K of Hantrax subdivision, sub, S, subdivision two, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, tabled from eight twenty-two twenty-four. As explained by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second to approve the amended plat application as presented. Commissioners, prior to making a decision on that, let's go on to the findings and discuss the findings of fact. And there are many, many categories that we have to consider or that staff has considered and done review on. Some of them have, the conclusion is that there's been little impact. And some of them, there's a couple of them that, where there's impact. So Mr. Gonzalez may be taking us through those will, will be good.
Your Chair and Commissioners, I'm sorry to interrupt. And I just, for purposes of clarity for the record, that this is a conditional approval and not just a, because I believe the motion was made to approve. And I think we're, we should be clear that there's a condition approval once those conditions are met. So.
Thank you.
Just adding that in for purposes of clarity.
So.
I'm sure that's what I intended.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolf, my apologies for missing your intent.
No, no, no. It's excellent. We have to have that on the record. So you're conditional approval and the second agrees. And I agree as well. We'll move forward with that conditional approval. Thank you very much for pointing that out. So now Commissioners, we want to look at the findings of fact. And let's, let's go through them. Talk about the findings here.
Chairman Commissioners, the findings of fact, a conclusion under agriculture. The subject property is not currently used for any agricultural purposes and the subdivision is not surrounded by.
Excuse me, Phil. I'm having trouble understanding it. Could you speak more slowly?
You have your microphone on there? Yeah, you might just need to be closer to your mouth or something.
I apologize for that. As I was discussing, findings of fact and conclusion, those findings of fact under impacts on agriculture, the subject property is not currently used for any agricultural purposes and the subdivision is not surrounded by any agricultural uses. The proposed amended subdivision, the conclusion of that is that the proposed amended subdivision would not have any additional impact on agriculture. Second, impacts on agricultural water users. A site visit was completed by staff, no evidence of irrigation ditches or any types that nature was located on site or on the property. According to the application, there are no existing agricultural water user facilities on the property or for the proposed amended subdivision. The conclusion being that the proposed amended subdivision would not have any additional impact on agricultural water users. Impacts on local services, specifically finds the fact regarding water and wastewater. According to the application, no new or modified sewage, sewage wastewater systems are being considered or planned for this application. And as per the submitted application, no new or modified water systems are being proposed through the subdivision amendment. Findings of fact regarding mail delivery. No new mail services or mailbox locations will be affected as a result of the decrease of the no access restriction. Conclusion being that proposed amended subdivision would not have any additional impact on mail delivery. Finds a fact regarding utilities. The existing subdivision contains multiple public access and utility easements, including Michelle Drive, sixty-foot wide public access utility easement adjacent there to lot P two, okay? As a result, the proposed subdivision amendment would not alter or create new utility easements. Conclusion being the proposed amended subdivision would not have any impact on those utilities. Findings of fact regarding roads and traffic, no new roads or modification of existing internal roads are planned as part of this amended subdivision. Condition of approval for the proposed subdivision will require that all existing road easements be added to the final subdivision plat. Lots P two K within the existing subdivision, but and have legal access to public roads called Shell Road. Moment. The amended plat application will provide an additional point of access to lot P two K from the public road, referred to as Michelle Drive. No loss of legal or physical access will occur as a result of this amended plat subdivision. As a result, conditions, as a result, the impacts to local services as set forth in the findings of fact will be mitigated by the imposed conditions of approval. Impacts natural environment.
Can I just interrupt you there? Commissioners, just to talk about that, under the roads and you, you said no loss of legal or physical access, actually an increase potentially in access for this particular lot, if this is removed. And so they will have that increased access to their lot essentially, but no, no legal or physical access is lost for any lot in the neighborhood. So that's a good point to make. Go ahead unless, unless there's other questions or comments.
Impacts on the natural environment. The amended subdivision will not cause one or more acres of ground disturbance and will not require a MPDES permit, referred to as the Montana Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit. A five-year weed management plan will not be required as part of the amended subdivision application because there are not being any soil disturbances that require it. The existing subdivision contains an EQ, a DEQ approval number O six dash one 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 six detailing approvals from the Department of Environmental Quality for Water and Wastewater Systems. The proposed subdivision plan here would not interfere with any of those existing water or wastewater systems. The conclusion being that the amended subdivision would not have any additional impact on the natural environment. Impacts on wildlife. Review of the amended subdivision raises no issue regarding wildlife. This is limited to only a no access restriction. Conclusion being there will be no impact wildlife. Wildlife habitat. Again, the application is not raising issues regarding wildlife habitat. Yes, limited to a single no access restriction discussion. As a result, the subdivision, amended subdivision would not have any impact on wildlife. Compliance with subdivision regulations. The proposed subdivision will meet all subdivision regulations and will remain in compliance with those regulations if all conditions of approval are satisfied. A list of conditions of approval and their impacts are listed there. As a result, compliance with the subdivision regulations as set forth in the findings of fact will be addressed by those conditions of approval. Compliance with survey requirements, a land survey and plat completed by a registered land surveyor in the state of Montana will be needed to be repaired, prepared. A review of that plat by community development and planning, Lewis and Clark County Survey Review Committee. And the examining land surveyor at the time of the final plat application is submitted to community development and planning department will ensure the plat conforms to all conditions of approval, plat rules and regulations. Additionally, conditions of approval as found in the staff report are required to address compliance with those survey requirements. As a result, compliance with survey requirements as set forth in these findings of fact are addressed by those conditions of approval when the application is satisfactory completed. The provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision. The existing subdivision grants legal and physical access to each parcel within the amended parcels P one, P two of Hantrax subdivision. As of now, the proposed subdivision decreases. The proposed amended subdivision decreases a no access restriction along that lot, P two K's western boundary. All lots within the existing P one, P two will continue to have a legal and physical access to all properties and as you mentioned, will have additional access. As a result, the provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within that subdivision as set forth in the findings of fact will not be impacted by this amended plat application.
Thank you very much. So Commissioners, let's talk about these findings. And from my, my assessment, that the good majority of, of the categories, example habitat or wildlife, they're, they're not highly impacted. But the legal and physical access is something that is important and it makes sure that we covered that. And via the staff's analysis, legal and physical access remains intact. This does not impact that. Matter of fact, and my perspective enhances that. And in terms of looking at here, oh, the rate, the subdivision regulations. So all subdivision regulations have to be considered and followed as well as the survey information. So if this, if this goes forward, that there needed to be conditions related to making sure that the regulations are followed as well as the survey requirement so that the plat is updated and filed properly as well. They have, those conditions will need to be met. This is, as we said, conditional and preliminary, right? So how about questions or comments related to the findings, Commissioners? I, I am in agreement with the findings of fact and conclusions as they're presented to us today. Any, any comments or questions about the findings? This is where we're, we're making sure that we've turned over all the rocks and things to consider the impacts of this proposal. And I think Commissioner Rolf, as you discussed earlier, that from your view, little impact.
That's right.
To the neighborhood and all of that. But we have to go through all of these and make sure that the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Anything else that we talk about? With the findings? Appreciate your, your work on this and, and analysis. Commissioners, it looks like that compliance with survey requirements, compliance with, as I mentioned, compliance with subdivision regulations can all be met through the conditions that are being proposed and are in the staff report, which we'll go over next. So first, we need a motion to accept the findings of fact as recommended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the findings of fact as recommended by staff. Further discussion, Commissioners, we've had some discussion here. Anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, the adverse impacts, we talked about this. Anything more that you want to? Add?
Chairman Commissioners, no, not this time. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. So as part of the findings and there's conclusions and discussion of the adverse impacts, Commissioners, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the conditions that are being proposed. So we would need a motion to adopt a conclusion that proposed amended parcels P one and P two amending the hand track contracts subdivision will be, have adverse impacts on the impact criteria. So we, we recognize that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to recognize the potential adverse impacts. And we talked about that, those adverse impacts mainly where conditions are being proposed to address them, which is under subdivision regulations and survey requirements mainly. We discussed the, the other impacts related to traffic and access and all of that as well. Commissioners, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's move to our our conditions, right? Talk about our conditions of approval. There are three.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, staff has recommended three conditions of approvals. Those conditions of approval would address the adverse impacts of the review criteria as set forth within the staff, staff report, and I'll briefly describe those. The first one, what the first condition of approval is to provide a, a subdivision plat in accordance with the applicable state surveys requirements and subdivision regulations, specifically to address all existing access utility easements on the subject property, adjust, adjacent and proposed public road and utility easements and to show and describe a no access restriction along a decreased of the no access restriction along the lot P two K western boundary. Those conditions of approval would mitigate the findings of fact under impacts on mail delivery, utilities, roads and traffic under local services, compliance with survey requirements and provisions of easements within the proposed subdivision and planning utilities and the provisions of legal access.
Thanks for tying those back. And that is condition number one. And as you just mentioned, it ties it back to, to the findings. Commissioners, any comments or questions about how that's tied back? Okay. Number two.
Number two, Chairman Commissioners, condition of approval, number two, requires the applicant to provide documentation showing that they are the lawful owner of the property with the apparent authority to go through the amended subdivision application process and showing the names of any potential lien holders or claimants of record. We believe that that condition of approval would mitigate the findings of fact under impacts on compliance with the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments related to that? And again, tying it back to our findings and conclusions. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Let's go to the next, next one.
Chairman Commissioners, number, condition of approval, number three. It is the preliminary approval shall be enforced for three calendar years. At the end of that approval period, Board of County Commissioners may, at the request of the applicant, extend that approval. They, so. And we believe that would, condition of approval would mitigate findings of fact under compliance with the subdivision. under compliance with the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Any questions about condition number three, Commissioners? All right. There is a proposed motion on the screen, if either of you would like to make that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the acceptance of the adverse app impacts. Is that how, how we need to say it?
I think just what's on there, motion to recommend a conclusion that the adverse impacts of the proposed amended.
The conclusion that the adverse impacts proposed by amended parcels one and two, P1 and P2, amending the on-track subdivision can be mitigated through the conditions approved by, conditions of approval recommended by the staff.
Great. Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second. Now, discussion. Any further discussion? I, I just really appreciate how the conditions are clearly tied back to the findings and each one has the findings that it's related to. Appreciate that. And, you know, again, mainly the local services, traffic, roads and subdivision regulations as well as the survey requirements. So those are the main findings that have conclusions or tied to. So anything further, Commissioners, that you'd like to discuss? Okay. We have a motion in second on the floor to approve our conditions of approval. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now, Commissioners, we left the original motion open. This is the motion to approve the conditional amended plat as presented. Now we have the findings of fact, we've approved conclusions as well as the conditions of approval. So back to the global motion that we made and we had a motion in the second on that. Everyone understand, we're good about discussion. Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you very much. Anything you want to add?
Not this time, thank you.
Mr. McNally, anything you want to add? Yeah, good to go. Okay. How about over here? All right. Great. So we have a motion in second to prove the application as presented, of course, again, with finding of facts, conclusions and conditions included in that now. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're preliminary conditionally approved. On we go. Thank you. Thank you for enduring the process as well, but we must. So there you go. All right, Commissioners? We are at that time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public come forward, we will stand adjourned.